I'd like to call this meeting to order, verify compliance with open meeting law agenda, and adopt the, I'm sorry, start with the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have Kevin Stoholjak participating remotely via telephone. There are no audience members here, so we'll skip to four gifts donations. Recognition, student and staff spotlight. A is Waukesha County Community Foundation grant Southwest Aquatic Team Whitnall High School Pool Fund. And B is Donate Well, Good Done, Great Donation for Art.
Mike will take this in a second. We didn't recognize, Kathy had notified our principals, but they are not here tonight to do that. So, Mike will take it in a second here. We did plan for this, but then didn't realize that we were gonna have a reunion.
Well, the aquatic team I can speak to, because that's actually an action item that requires board action. So, this was money that had been raised over the course of time, really for a new pool, to put in towards a new pool. And now that that hasn't been on the radar, that the referendum went forward without that, that they had these dollars sitting there. So, they have donated now the dollars for any use for the swim program, boys or girls, whatever, however that gets divvied out, back to, back to the district. So, I'm not recalling an exact dollar amount off the top of my head, but I believe it was something above $4,000 that Swim Team is getting from, from LOFT. The donation received from Donate Well, I don't know enough about what that program is. Kathy, I don't know if anything was told to you.
It was $1,000, I know that through the program. And it had earmarked for art.
Perfect.
And Nicole Tantoni's name was on it.
Great.
So, she must have applied for some sort of grant or donation or something like that. And then she had received that.
Great. So, from those two donations, we thank those two groups.
Good. Thank you. Next is consent agenda. Five, A is approval of June vouchers and vouchers payable. B is approval of May 20th and June 10th, 2019, school board minutes. C is approval of personnel recommendations. D is acceptance of Waukesha County Community Foundation grant in Southwest Aquatic Team Whitnall High School Pool Fund. E is Donate Well, Good Done, Great Donation, Art. F is approval of 2019-2020 Chapter 220 contract. And G is approval of 2019-20 Southeastern Wisconsin Alliance 66.0301 agreement. Would anyone like to remove an item?
Yes.
Okay. Would anyone else like to remove an item? Now, I'll take a motion to approve five, A, B, C, D, E, and G.
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. F, Quinn.
So, how many students do we have left?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty.
And where, what is, would be the lowest, the lowest grade?
Lowest grade, third, fourth, fourth grade.
Really?
I mean, they're, they're gonna be with us past the funding formula, maybe zero. Yep. Now, what, what they're gonna do from a counting standpoint, whether they allow us to count that person as open enrollment or what that looks like in 21, 22, I don't know that yet. But we don't get new revenue right now from Chapter 220 students. We get more aid, state aid to offset property taxes, is in essence what we get now. So, I don't know what they'll do in 21, 22. We still have Chapter 220 students, but I don't think they can, they can't leave our district, is my, is my understanding.
Well, we have to, you don't know if we have to give the same amount of services that is currently at 220 bussing?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know what that's gonna look like yet. No.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Onto six action items. A, textbook adoption in AP Physics. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? Discussion? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, motion carries. Onto B, 2019-2020, noneducator contractor salary employees. I am going to abstain from discussing and voting, but I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, since we haven't looked at this at all, let's just give.
Personnel committee did.
Personnel committee did. Thank you.
Thank you.
A week ago. Don't say it in a way.
Thank you. Personnel committee, thank you, Kevin. Kevin, thank you. Personnel committee did see this. We did run this by Personnel Committee before putting it on the agenda for, for tonight. The idea was, is that we have a support staff and noneducator contract salaries to approve that aren't tied to such a robust educator model that we currently have. Given the, given the proposal that we gave to, to the union, we took that proposal and simply lined up all these, all of the educators and their, their increases. We took the median increase that we saw within that group. And that group, that median of what educators were getting, really hovered around all of our new educators in, who are getting this, this increase, hovered around the median. That median was 2.09%. And so, not having a, a model in which there are, we have the ability to allow support staff to go above and beyond CPI, but also not having anything in place to get to, there, there was a weird kind of interplay that we needed to think about, and also what would work with the budget. And so, we tried to tie together the median wages that educators were getting to then our support staff and our noneducator contracted salaries as well. So, that's why both B and C, you're seeing 2.09% as the 1920 wage increase. Given the new proposal that we gave tonight to, to the, to the teachers' union, the, for all educators returning to the district next year, given the UAI, given micro credentials, given market demand, all those things, anyone returning, the average increase is 2.59%. So, this is kind of this mixture of no model, but yet there's a robust evaluation system. And let's bring these two together as, as what we can offer from a budgetary standpoint.
Anyone have any questions? Okay. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, and I abstain from voting. Onto six, C, 2019-20, support staff hourly wages. I'll again abstain from discussing or voting on this topic, but I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same, it's the same rationale.
Anyone have any questions?
So then, these two items, and other than the teachers, everybody's covered under these two items?
No. Not Dr. Olson.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None, and I abstain. Motion carries. Onto D, student handbooks. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
I have a couple of things, but I know I'm coming into this a little bit late because you discussed it at the last meeting, and I was at eighth grade graduation. So, um, so I'm not sure how to give these, but I've got a couple little notes. So, should I just run down the list?
Are they technical changes in these titles or actual questions on the substance of it?
Um, well, I'll just, I'll just tell you them, because they're pretty minor, okay? So, I noticed in the Edgerton handbook that they talk about the expectations matrix, but it's not actually in the text of the book. But in the middle school, the expectations matrix is in the text of the book, and that was nice to have it right in the book. So, I'd recommend putting it right in the book. I wanted to request that all the board policies are hyperlinked. I noticed some inconsistency. Some manuals had them hyperlinked and some didn't, and maybe that was just a function of how it comes across in our packet. The Whitnall Middle School lists the school board. I don't really think we need to be listed in there, but Stephen Boots is our treasure, and he's listed as a member, not the treasure, so that's a minor correction. And that's all I had.
Did you send these via email in between?
No, they're, I just have them tonight. I apologize.
I do think Stephen brought up that one about the elementary schools being consistent last time or something. He liked the middle school one, so we'll have to go back, and I think they just, does that sound, am I reading?
Yes.
Yeah, he brought up the hyper.
The hyperlink we were talking about.
The hyperlink, he brought that up. So, I think one of the things is that they were revising the PBIS, or they were looking at something this summer, and once they confirmed it, they were gonna make that change. That's fine, and these are mine, and I agree that the middle school formatting was like superior, so.
Yeah. He, I think, I was just, when you said that, I think he recalled that.
Okay, great.
Yeah, during the meeting, it was part of the meeting.
So, it would have been on the video?
Yeah, when he had talked about that, I think, last time. And I think the three principals, or four of them, who were up there said that they would, Lori and Chris said that they would make those changes. Am I, okay.
There are schools.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Then I'll take a motion to approve. Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None, motion carries. Onto E, employee handbook. I'll take a motion to approve.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion or questions?
So, my only comment is that I had some questions about the activities and coaching fees, but there is a note in there saying that that's going to be handled separately. So, I just wanted to confirm that, that I'm good.
That'll be a July, a robust July discussion.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Then, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, and I am abstaining. Onto F, co-curricular code. Take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Aye.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, so, I was looking through this, and my biggest concern with this is that when we're bringing in the middle school, as you mentioned, is our middle school letters and our high school letters are different. So, when you say that a kid has a B or a beginning level in middle school, that's the lowest grade that you can get in middle school. Now, a B means something different when you're in high school. It's a little bit confusing, and I think as a board, we should talk about unless you've already gone there, if we feel like we want to have that part in the middle school where you're excluding the lowest grade. But I personally find it confusing, so I'm not sure if we should go, if we should go there. Or if we should go there at this time and take a look at it for the next year. I don't know how mission critical it is to the co-curricular code, so that's a question, and.
Yeah, so I think we did discuss it during the last meeting. And I know there was an email follow-up in response to that, that they are reviewing that. It's not going to necessarily stay as the B for beginning. There is an incomplete option or not complete option that they can reference. That would show that a student is not submitting their work. So, there are other alternatives, but there is a reason we went to, Lynn, if you wanna join in, there is a reason we chose that grading scale versus an A through F scale.
Yeah, in general, we try to.
Do you wanna come up here so we can get it on?
Well, she's walking up. It is only back there. Just to, to say, so I met with Dave Pentec the last time, because that was something that he needed to look at. And he met with Bob and then talked with Lynn today in terms of what does this actually mean. Dave also ran some data, because I said, well, how many Bs are actually given? So, he ran the data. He worked with, oh, counseling ran it over there for him yesterday. How many Bs were given in sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade at this last semester mark? So, he had that actual data of how many kids would have had a B overall and, and had two Bs. And remember that middle school only does summative grades at semester time. And we're talking summative grades, not an assignment grade. So, this means, just like, we don't get, kids who get an F or a D minus on an assignment aren't eligible for curriculums. They actually would have to get that at the end of an entire grading period. So, we're saying that in, in end of a semester, a student is still at beginning of a whole year of English or math or whatever. So, that's the comparison.
Yeah, and it's gonna have to, it's gonna have to be really clear in the articulation of this, at this time, you are expected to be proficient. And if you're not proficient, if you're hitting that developing or beginning when, at this point in time, you really should be proficient, that's where the level of grade becomes a little clearer. We did intentionally remove the points, because it kept bringing people back to that mathematical computation instead of the description of the levels, rather than, you know, you know, a five out of five or four out of five or three out of five. So, both the high school and the middle school, well, K eight actually, have five distinct levels that the descriptions correlate almost exactly to each other. It's just the labeling of the A, B, C, D, F, or the exceeding proficient, developing, beginning, or no evidence. So, there's a five levels, five levels each one.
Okay. And just to make sure that I understand, so we're saying that two beginning, Bs are beginning at first semester or second semester? So, is it your second semester grade goes into your eligibility for the following spring? Is that, is that how it's breaked out?
Yep, at high school too. That's how it works. Yep.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
And to be clear, we're not saying at this point a B will mean that. As we said, we're reviewing it.
No, it does mean that.
Well, yeah, we're voting on it, right? So.
No, the two Bs, we did, in terms of the Bs piece of it. What we're trying to look at is the grading scale if we look at something different. So, the, in the red that got changed is that it's two Bs, just like two Fs. At the end of a summative, not two B grades, because we expect kids to have Bs as their, and it keeps getting replaced.
Correct. At their, their final grade for semester.
If they are at, at the end of seventh grade math, they are still at beginning, that means that they are not proficient, and we want a seventh grader to be at. Now, they can be developing, which is still not where we want them, and still be eligible.
Right.
Right? So, I think in terms of the rubrics, when you look at not proficient, proficient, they still can move up to develop, they still have to be proficient. But they did have to, two of seven grades would have to be at that point.
Okay.
Because kids get seven summative grades in middle school. Is that right? Or?
Yes.
Okay, seven.
Okay. And so, now just, I'm getting a little confused here. So, but you're saying at the end of first semester, you're expecting, you're just expecting them not to have a B at the.
In two classes.
In two cla, correct. Yes, correct. Okay.
Now, remember, some classes are only a semester long.
Okay.
If I took art, it's only a semester long, or tech ed, or there's a lot of classes that are only a semester long.
Right, yeah. I feel okay with this, but the whole letters matching from middle school to high school is very, you know, awkward.
And that's the part that we're looking at, I think, as Jonathan said, is that we're trying to decide how do we, do we look at sixth grade maybe differently than seventh and eighth? Because sixth grade is still a transition from elementary and, and whatever. But those are conversations that Lynn is working with communities of teachers and the principals. And I think Bob has some thoughts on that too, as he's working with teachers. So, that part of it will probably, as we solidify the high school a little bit more, that's a, that's a big gap. You know, you go from elementary to high school all of a sudden, and we're like, how can we use that middle school to help transition them a little bit more from where they're coming to, to what it will be like? As an eighth grader, you know, that, that's, that's a big transition of what all of a sudden it looks like in high school. So, we need to look at that closer to that point. Yeah.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you.
Back, go back.
So ridiculous.
Okay. Any other questions?
Another question. I just wanted to say thank you for Dave and everybody that was involved in making this work, that we actually tried to have some cooperation in it. Since it was lacking, I think it's a really good thing to have out there, is that we have some ground rules, so it's not so gray, and why did this person do this? Or how did this person get allowed this E because of that? It's pretty well set there what you need to do, and it's reasonable and allows people to grow. Really nice.
And I like the fact that it was a team of coaches and advisors at the high school that helped revise that policy. That was not work that Dave did by himself on that, so, yeah.
That's what I did, nothing.
I have one other comment. I have one other comment, and this is, I'm coming in late, so I realize that I'm coming in late with this. But when I was looking at all of the levels of infractions, that I was just curious, like, are, is every infraction going to be enforced? Because there is a lot of them. So, there's one for like, for example, littering, you know? Are, are, are we going to enforce every, do you know what I mean? So, are you going to enforce every single thing that's on there? Are we stepping up to enforce every single thing and understand and know every bit of this code for enforcement? So, I'm okay going with it, because I think it's good that we're doing this right now. I think that perhaps maybe we need, I would be interested in seeing how it goes the first year and then looking and saying, are we really doing, is it really doing what we're intending it for to do? So.
Yeah, the other thing to note, as Dave and I talked this last week with Charlie, is that, as you know, Ryan Relich is moving from, from the high school to middle school, and Ryan's been at the high school for several years, in which she's had to enforce the code with behavior and what that looks like. So, that will be a nice transition as we look at it. And we also have to understand that everything that students might get called on for isn't a, an offense that will be impacted by the co-curricular code, right? So, so there are, I think the littering piece of it is really out in the public, in which there would be a ticket.
Okay.
It's not littering at school. So, littering per, right, like if a kid drops a piece of paper in the hallway, they're not gonna, like, say you can't play basketball tonight. Littering means where you would be out.
If you were ticketed and, okay.
Correct. That we're saying that there are some things that in the community, should you get a ticket for disorderly conduct, that would not be becoming. It carries a weight on our code.
Okay.
Yep. So, that, and that, that hasn't changed. That's been true of co-curricular codes in most school districts.
Right. And then my only other comment is that when you're looking at athletics and activities, I was wondering if we could group some of the athletic stuff together versus like the activities? Because it's like, oh, well, you don't need a physical if you're going to be in drama club, right? So, it seemed like maybe organizationally, some of that stuff could be grouped, but, I mean, that's a small comment.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Kevin, was that an aye?
That was an aye. That didn't work the minutes you thought it passed.
Okay. I just, I just, I read your minds, so, thank you. Seven is reports. A is 2018-19 district goals, 45 day plans.
So, Lynn can come back up. Jackie is on vacation today and actually out of state, so I will be doing Jackie's part and my part and Mike and Lynn. No, I'm not doing your part. So, I think you have goal one. So, again, these are links off from the website. If you click on our prospectus and it has the 45 day plans, so.
Yeah, so, goal number one was the development of learner profiles. We, we took our, our stab at creating a learner profile that would, one learner profile for every student in the district, which we were told early on was a very lofty goal. And we did, we were successful with getting the structure set up of having a learner profile for every student, and they're listed by, they're in folders by graduation year. And our plan is that these learner profiles will travel with them. So, the class of, you know, 2022 stays in this folder, and teachers had them this year, and then that folder gets transferred to their next year's teachers, et cetera. We did have some struggles with it. Our biggest struggle was really just trying to develop some consistent time for teachers to work with students on this. You know, we're trying to be sensitive to not just another thing to do, but we want to have some purpose and value behind these things. And as we get to really the point where we are emphasizing that we really aren't going to be able to do anything academically with students until we know them well, just as whole people and individuals. And the learner profile allows teachers to really get to know students better, and it also allows students to know themselves better as learners. They help develop these learner profiles. They help the students develop them. And students get to put information into these profiles, saying, this is how I best learn. This is when I'm most comfortable. This is what actually makes me uncomfortable. And teachers can take that information and then use it to plan appropriately for those individual students. Most teachers, I would say all teachers, understand the value and the purpose. I think that some of them struggled per levels with when do we actually spend the time with this? Because time is at a premium all the time. We found that our K five teachers had an easier time, just because they see some of the same students throughout the day, so they could carve out that time a little bit better or a lot better than our high school teachers, who see a different group of students every single hour. So, trying to find that dedicated time was our, our biggest, biggest struggle.
Could, could we use Delken time at the high school level?
We can, and that was the intention of the high school. But then, if people really had a critical need to meet with students about some issue about class, those people would say, okay, I can't do that right now, because we need to do this. So, you just wouldn't have the consistency, like across the board, everybody's doing it.
So, you wanna address it at that time?
We would like to, yes. That would be the logical time to.
Because we have.
Yes, yes. And then we had various levels. I mean, we had some learner profiles, I mean, students, some filled out pages and pages of, you know, this is me and here I am. And some were just like, I think I'm this, and, you know, very minimal, but that's individual as well.
Does the middle school have a common time?
Yep, they have connect time. And they were using connect time, and they had some advisory time, and I think they were starting to use advisory time. That's collapsed for next year, so they'll have to rely more on the connect time.
Question. So, by the time a person's in high school, they should be able to fill out their learner profile kind of by themselves? I guess I'm curious about how much assistance a high school student or a middle school student would need in developing their own learner profile piece? I mean, you might share it and, and say, here's what I have, but I'm, I'm curious about where the ownership of that lies.
Yeah. And you're exactly right. It's a gradual release of responsibility. The younger they are, the more they're gonna need some guidance and some explanation about, you know, what do these various components need? There are several tabs across the bottom. They can click up, and there's a different page in each tab. By the time they're in high school, they can certainly fill out the information, but then they still need some guidance from teachers as to, how are you going to use this? How are you going to create some SMART goals? How are you going to use this in sort of your course planning, your career planning? And it gets to be much more of just academic goals and post-secondary goals and work goals and life goals when they get to the high school level. So, they, they can be more independent, but they still need some facilitating time between either them and counselors or them and teachers, just to keep that conversation going.
That was my next question, is like, is guidance involved in this?
Yeah, they're, they're not involved in the sitting with the students necessarily, but they are using them and pulling them up and using them with their career planning. So, they have had, they have found some value with that as well. We also decided that the learner profiles probably fit better as a part of a bigger picture. So, we're developing, we're starting to develop our roadmap for a graduate. And we've been talking about, maybe it makes more sense that the learner profile becomes a piece of that rather than a standalone thing, because the standalone thing is what is hard to kind of keep coming back and addressing on this consistent basis. So, we are going to look this summer at how do we get these learner profiles to stay, maintain? We don't want to walk away from them, because we did get a lot of work done getting them all set up, and there is significant amount of work done in them. So, we want to develop that kind of bigger piece of ownership and usefulness as part of the bigger picture of the district, district roadmap. So, end of the year, we're really looking at evaluating what was the value. We're still having those discussions with principals right now. We had some discussions with teachers last week, when a lot of teachers were in, still working, about, you know, how much did they use them and to what level? And then making determinations for changes. We are gonna stick with learner profiles in some format. But where they're actually gonna fit in is, is what we have yet to determine.
Okay, my goal two, which was Jackie's, which had to do with social-emotional learning. And so, speaking of that learner, the roadmap or whatever that we've been considering, part of it was, we had done some things with social-emotional learning. You see through the different cycles that we had done the line quest to provide some curriculum K five to see what, what that did. And I think what we found out is that we need to have a very comprehensive K 12 plan, which is where that roadmap, which we presented in April, needs to happen. Otherwise, it's sort of like these hit and miss things. Teachers are like, hey, I'm gonna work on this, or hey, we have this kindness retreat. Hey, we have, like, okay, well, that's great, and they're great individual events, but then what do we do to consistently build on that? So, we know that our middle school had that anti-bullying grant that they got and really started something, but the question is like, where does that go from there? How do we sustain that? How does that get into classrooms? So, teachers are talking about that. So, a couple of things with cycle four with the social-emotional is that we did do that developmental asset survey with the end of year with our students. And so, we'll have that data to sort of talk about. And if you're not familiar with it, as we shared earlier that Jackie did, it's those 40 attributes that every learner should have. And one of them is like, I feel like there is at least one adult in the community that, that I have a connection with, or I'm involved in at least one activity outside of school. So, the more of those that you have, the more likely you are to have support and what, what they call a developmental asset in terms of helping a child develop. And so, we get concerned if there are children who have very few or none in terms of that. So, I think that that data collectively, our goal isn't to necessarily share with individual teachers that survey to that level, but it's to say, wow, very few of our students overall have an adult in the community that they feel, like, they don't feel like their community values, you know, teenagers or whatever. What can we do to sort of facilitate that? Or, or I, you know, it, whatever that might be. So, we will get that data and be. So we will get that data and be able to look at that to turn like, how can we help kids have some of that? And that's based on research, a lot of research that, that comes out of a place out of Minnesota. Did not do the student non-cognitive still growth to see where they started and end. And that's mostly in our elementary schools with that Lion Quest, you know, where were they with resilience in the beginning, at the end? Again, some of this stuff is really hard to measure. And so I think what sort of took over was we need to develop some learner outcomes early on so teachers know exactly what, what that looks like in a student. What are some attributes of that non-academic skill? What does it look like when a third grader is showing resilience or they're able to, whatever that looks like? We did do the restorative practices, train the trainer. Two people from the district went, so we no longer have to send people. They can train people on restorative practices, that's a common practice that is used, not just in education. We actually used it with some staff members in terms of where there are some people to facilitate that. Where someone feels, and we do it with students who feel like, you know, I, Lynn did something to me and I, you know, and we need to talk about it to resolve it. Because a lot of times what happens in schools is a student goes to the principal's office, they talk about what they did wrong and they send them back to the classroom. Never actually having a communication between the two students who are now, they, we haven't really restored the, the friendship or the, the relationship between the two people that actually had the conflict. So it could be between a teacher and a student, it could be between two students most often. And so we've been using that, you know, Crystal Stingle was one of the people trained and she was, and that seemed to work when students could say, well, when you did that, that's how it made me feel and that's why I did that. And so that really allowed, otherwise we'd talk to each student individually and then never let them hear from each other in their own words, how that made them feel when they did that or said that to them, like you called me a dummy, that made me feel, they need to hear that from the other kid. If they hear that from the principal, like, well, you know, you made the other kid feel sad, it doesn't have the same level of meaning. So we will continue with having, using the restorative practices and can do a lot of the training in districts. So our pupil services folks, we will get all of them trained as part of that model and having it. So that's where we are with the SCL.
So because she left our district, is there enough people in our district to facilitate?
Yeah, so I think we ended up, didn't, did Kayla end up going at the last minute to replace that, I thought? Yeah, so our high school social worker finished the actual train the trainer piece of it. So we do have our high school social worker and Jackie to train the trainers that are in district, so we're good, we're good in stuff like that.
Question, but at the middle school, so to handle the middle school students?
Well, well, so this is the train the trainer.
Correct.
So we have one of, I'm trying to think who, someone else is there trained in that. And we will get the rest of the middle school pupil services, our school psych, our social worker and our counselor, in addition to principal and new, well, AP will all get trained in it. So they'll all have it, so this is really train the trainer stuff that happened and, yep. Do you have goal three?
Goal three, yes, goal three is our literacy plan. And we really started off this year trying to think about how do we develop a multi-year literacy plan, figure out what we need at each level. And I would say that right now, because the response to intervention teams and the literacy coaches are much, have been much more firmly embedded in our K5 schools, I would say our two elementary schools are really ahead of the game as far as developing those literacy plans, working with teachers, working on structures and strategies. We've had a lot of good success this year, K12 really, to, via our micro-credential system and our floating PD structure that we've had in place, we've been able to offer teachers a lot of training and a lot of awareness raising. And really, all schools have done a pretty good job of raising that literacy awareness. At the K5 level, they were able to complete these reading and writing unit sequences that have been sort of half incomplete. And just last week, we'd had a lot of completion of those coming to fruition. So we've got a better scope and sequence through our K5 curriculum. Our six through eight and our nine through 12 systems have just not had those data teams really firmly in place. So right now, we're still struggling a little bit with the, what does the RTI team do, when will they actually meet? How are they actually going to structure interventions? And again, the schedule kind of gets in our way there, not so much at the middle school, they've got time and place. It's the Falcon time thing where that 30 minutes really isn't enough time to do what those interventions need to do per the prescribed time. So high school is still struggling a bit with how do we get this stuff where we need it to be? That being said, I will say that the English department has made really good strides this year at the high school. They all engaged in learning how to run workshop models. So rather than just the lecture of like, the teacher stands and talks to all 25 students at once, getting strategic groups and really, you know, assessing literacy skills and needs and how do we attend to various levels within one classroom? And they've made some great progress on that. The one area that we fell flat all year long was we, we had a lofty goal of, there's literacy in EOA classes, obviously, there's reading and writing. But then getting that literacy to transfer deliberately into all of the content areas, because everybody deals in reading and writing skills in a content area, whether you're a FIAD teacher or a health teacher or a tech ed teacher. And we really backed off of that goal where we had said we were gonna raise that awareness for those non-literacy content-based people and we're gonna talk about where does literacy happen, what kind of communication skills do you ask of your students? And really getting students to connect that, you know, reading and writing is not just for this class, it's, it's a life thing. We did back away from that because we found out early that some of our teachers just weren't real comfortable with new standards that had come out and in their own content area. So we're gonna save that goal out for next year, along with really trying to elevate that six through 12 RTI team process.
For goal four, that was to complete a 10-year capital improvement plan. You may notice that that's not in front of you. Where we, what I did not respect in this process was the amount of time the referendum would take, the amount of variables that are still in that planning process. In order to which, check off what has been completed off the previous 10-year facility plan and thus move forward with an appropriate facility plan after the referendum is complete. So where we kind of left off, where we are with, with really Todd and myself is that we have a pretty clear anecdotal evidence of what needs to happen next over the next two to, two to three years, which is a lot of roofing, putting together a plan for HVAC replacement, the parking lot behind the high school, various things that we know need to happen. However, there's not a systematized way yet to go about prioritizing those things, which a 10-year facility plan would accomplish. And be able to say, hey, this is on the plan, this is why it needs to happen now. And so that is where we are, are left right now with this plan as we wrap up the referendum. As a side note as well, the 10-year plan, not only is it good for planning and just best practice, especially the three to five years, and once you get beyond five years, there's certainly a lot of variables. But to spend dollars out of our Fund 46, which is money that is set aside for capital improvement projects, the project has to be on a board-approved capital improvement plan. And so right now, our plan is from 2015. So there may be some items on there that, yes. However, we cannot touch those dollars yet until the 22, 23 fiscal year. Not that I'm saying that we're gonna complete this as soon as the referendum work is essentially completed. Todd and I realize this is our, our top priority, we're just at a point right now where I didn't respect the referendum process and how much time that's really involved with Todd and how much financial variables are still out there with completing that and being able to really say, here's how much contingency is left, here's how much interest we accrued and here's what we can do with it. We have, I think I brought to the board, what was it, February, March, when we approved the roofing for this next year, we certainly talked about where those dollars would come from and that is starting to crystallize. It's getting it into a plan with Todd's coordination that we really need the referendum to be completed before we have a full-blown 10-year facility plan at the conclusion of a, of a referendum project.
So when would that be in place?
So we are planning on the referendum being at a, really a true completion by the end of September. So that means Todd's time becomes much more, I don't know what Todd will do with himself. He'll be much more free to be able to take on, to replace referendum planning with, let's talk about this 10-year facility plan. So let's call it late fall, early winter is when we could capture the board and say, this is what 10 years out looks like. It's timing of roofing and age, timing of HVAC and age, those are the big things that require large dollar amounts that we have to be aware of what's coming. There's always little things that you can continue to buy little, I'm talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. But there's also, there's always, hey, we're gonna asphalt this, we need to, you know, handle this concrete job, whatever, that's the answer to the question.
Yes. So what is, to tie up on Todd, I mean, we have an architect, we have a general contractor, what, what is he doing?
So, so that's a great question, I, we'll, we'll edit this out from Todd. So there are five alternate projects that he is involved.
That we are doing.
That we're doing outside.
Money's coming from the referendum, but we're doing outside the GC.
Correct, so that's one.
Okay.
But I'm gonna keep going just out of respect for Todd.
You said there weren't a lot today.
Larissa Franklin.
Two is CG Schmidt can, and, and the architects can certainly be the ones communicating all by themselves. But Todd is the one who is representing the district and all those conversations as well. And so he needs to have a, a great, if not better than anybody at that table, understanding of what's being brought together. So that takes up a lot of his time with just coordinating between CG Schmidt and Bray and being the district voice that's at the table, making sure that our voice is still heard. Yes, that's part of CG Schmidt's role and yes, that's part of Bray's role, but he's gotta make sure that those two are coming together as well. So there's a lot of these, he's involved in those two groups.
Okay, great, thank you.
I don't have anything you want to add, I know you worked with Todd quite a bit on this as well.
Yep, that's fine.
That's fine, good. Uh, goal five. So we do have a new, and I think more streamlined process in place for hiring educators and, and, and support staff, which is what we set out to do by March. So in March, I said, hey, this process is, is in place. It's now truly enrolled in practice as you approve hires all the time now. We're going through what that, that process is, is looking like in practice. And so we're in the midst right now of simply getting feedback from principals as they go through the practice, getting clarification from them on where they may still have been confused, oh, I thought this was supposed to be done by HR, no, this is supposed to be done by principals. We're taking on this role now. And so there's still that feedback happening in the process. As I said, I think we've shortened down the amount of initial information that we get in the forms of questionnaires and in our application process. But we also have now a more robust pre-screening process that we do over the phone through, through HR and through our principals and hiring managers. So it's just bringing together some new pieces and, and continuing to get feedback on, on the hiring process itself.
So how long's it been in place?
So we pretty much had the process, we probably sat down with principals and hiring managers in February, got some fine-tuned detail on what they'd like to see in it. So since March, we started to pilot it. In April and forward, we've really been using it. But now that the hirings are coming fast and furious, there's a lot of information on coming back on the process itself. So within the last month, it has been in place with a lot of hires that you're, part of you're seeing.
So would you say that we look at it over a three-year period and see how successful it is or shorter than that?
Well, ultimately, you want to look at what your hires were and whether they're.
They're still with us, right?
Yeah, they're still with us and whether.
I mean, that's why you can't do it on a one year.
No, it can't be one year, it can't be one year. So getting the process in place was the goal that was put forward in goal five. Now it's going to be, all right, let's see, did this do anything for us as far as where we want culture to be or where we want, you know, different mindsets to be, or did we get to the root of what we want to see in our hires in this class versus that class? So it's, uh, it's just a feedback now that we're gonna be in, whether we need to adjust or not.
We'll be able to quantify it in a year, two years, three years?
It, it depends, I guess, what we want to be quantifying, if it's retention rate, yes. I mean, there, there are certain quantifiable things like retention rate that we could certainly look at to quantify whether our hiring process was better versus before. Though last year, we had a, a pretty large turnover. So it was kind of a good year in which to, from the standpoint of collecting data about, here was a baseline year in which we didn't have this hiring process in place. Now this year, we do, are there gonna be any differences next year or two years from now to quantify whether retention is better or culture's where we want it to be?
Well, it isn't, the, the process is, what are they meant to do? Are they meant for retention, are they meant for quality educator?
Yeah, I, I think there was a couple of different goals. One was to have a better pre-screening process to bring forward clear information for our hiring managers before they got involved in the process. So that's one. How we quantify that yet, I don't know, I don't know quite how we necessarily quantify that yet, but that was a goal. But then two is, yeah, we looked at, we, we did culture surveys with our new staff at the beginning of last year. We would continue to do some culture surveys to see, are they in the quadrants that we're looking for through the new hiring process? I think that could be some valuable information we bring back as well.
So I think the biggest part of the goal of it was fit, because a lot of times you want to make sure that it's a, it's a fit.
Sorry, my culture, yes.
But both the person, the employee that you're getting and that. So sometimes you're gonna say, you're not a bad employee or you're not, it's just not a fit for the organization where we're at. And so we didn't necessarily have questions that sort of got at the right things. You know, we were looking at things like experience and licenses and some of that stuff, but that doesn't always translate to things like the culture. So the pre-screener was asking questions from our vision, mission, some of those pieces that sort of, how would you reply? And so the fit piece of it goes into, you know, part of it's anecdotal with principals, like this person, the culture fit, it was a great fit in terms of the team, all of that. You know, part of it, a little bit of the performance piece with teachers, you know, that they aren't on an improvement plan a year out, right? That they, the other thing, and while it's not a goal of every teacher, if we hire a teacher with experience, they can, after one year of the new teacher piece, it's out of the pie, they should be out of it. Now, if we say, no, we're retaining him, then there was some skills that maybe were deficient when we hired them and maybe didn't check for that. So I think there's a couple of different places overall, but the fit was a critical piece because if we're trying to get to the culture, not climate, culture, the piece of it is, is that we need to be hiring. And, because the, the cost of not hiring the right fit and finding out three years later, like, I like to do X and your organization is doing Y, doesn't mean that either one of you are wrong, it just means that it wasn't the fit. So this whole process was really about getting the right fit and doing that upfront.
Those last two pieces are very quantifiable as far as where.
So we had asked questions of our new hires to help us with our benefit piece, right? Last year?
Um, that was sort of a second, anecdotally, that Karen was just keeping track herself, like when people call us after we make an offer, what are the questions they want to know? That wasn't necessarily part of the hire piece of it, but she was just taking copious notes, as she does. And she just happened to be like, oh, it was their follow-up questions, yeah.
Okay, good.
Sure. Goal six had to do with two-way communication and so we've been sharing that. So the cycle four that I wanted to share out where we're at is, there was concern about when we send out parent, mass parent emails through Infiniti Campus, the delay when we send it out to maybe all K12 parents. So we checked on that and there does seem to be, you know, when we use, there's two different ways of sending it through Infiniti Campus. One is through the emergency piece of it and, and one of it is just through regular. And we're not quite sure if it's on the Infiniti Campus side where it just sends out in batches or if it's on, if people are using Hotmail yet or various, how they look at the spam piece of it. So we've reached out, both Todd, Stacy and Logan have reached out to other districts that use Infiniti Campus, we're clearly not the only district that uses Infiniti Campus. They have similar issues. And so we have a question out to Infiniti Campus, is there a way to, if we batch process it, instead of saying, I'm gonna send it to all 3,200 email addresses, is it better to send it to just, even if it's the same message? Because parents wouldn't know that. Should we send it out so then it doesn't see the whole thing as 3,200 emails and chunks it out? Can we just send multiple, so there's stuff like that that we're trying to do. Emergency Messenger seems to put it up at the top of the queue for, it does somehow flags it in cyberspace, but it doesn't give us as many filtering options, like we can't send it to our staff that way and various things. So we are continuing to look at that and we want to make sure, as we shared with you, we shared with parents and we are planning on doing some face-to-face parent meetings at the beginning of school year to just say, hey, let's come in, we'll help you walk through Infiniti Campus to make sure your settings are set up so you're receiving text messages. So you're, that was one of the things that came out of that January meeting from parents, is that it'd be nice to have a face-to-face, show me how to get to the website, how do I navigate Infiniti Campus, how do I do all of that stuff? Instead of just read this manual type of thing.
When would that be?
Probably August, that last week in August when we have some of our parent open houses. Yep, we'd make some optional sessions there, yep. We did a, we know Window E newsletter, our first one out June 3rd, and we sent that out. We have 153 people who are signed up for that specific, which are community people, not staff members. So that's, they're a hard, you know, we send out our quarterly hard copy of the newsletter and so this is electronic. And so this is the first wave and, and, and you can. And so, this is the first wave and, and, and you can sign up. And so, I sent it out to a couple of community contacts, encourage people to do that, and we'll continue to do that. It did help when we were doing our survey on, um, our world language, art and music programs. There were some people who saw it in the E newsletter that ended up taking it. So, it's, it's getting there. So, well, it would, we've only had one issue out, but that will be a standard that we will keep in there. We are right now, uh, the distributing the programming visioning survey. And one of the goals or the objectives of this goal was to get two-way communication. And, and, and community members are harder to get at because they don't come to our site. So, I gave it a blue by saying it wasn't something we had planned going into quarter four here, but we ended up doing it. And did get a relatively, you know, a good response on that. Um, when we did our referendum surveys, you know, those were hard copy postcards. And those are expensive if we continue to do it every time we wanna get some feedback. Um, but we did use, uh, and, and in terms of getting feedback from current and alumni parents and students, used a couple of different avenues there. Um, and so, saying, how can we get those? So, we've talked with the new Booster Club president and one thing that we're talking about, how, how do we store alumni or how do we get in contact with alumni? We did this year, um, collect all of our Class of 2019's personal emails in addition to keeping their Whitnell email for one more year so we have access to them, which was something that just hadn't been done in the past. And so, that's one of the pieces of how do we, if we want two-way communication, we can't always hard copy mail stuff. So, how do we keep in contact with that? So, trying to increase some of those. So, um, and the last day of, uh, school, as we always have a closure to the school year, you know, shared with the things that we had done this year with the two-way communication. So, we started the, just as a summary of this whole goal, we had started the family forum, which is, continues to be extremely, um, successful. I watch a lot of the, you know, people, there's a babysitting group that broke off from there and there's a lot of, you know, they, they, which is great because those are, or can I carpool for summer school? I mean, all of those things are phenomenal and a great resource, um, to go to. Um, we had some roundtable discussions. We did have an ad hoc committee, um, involving some parents for technology that just met for a couple of times. We had some focus groups, um, different surveys that we sent out to alumni, our E newsletter, and then we have our, um, district building leader committee. So, in terms of communication, those were expansions, um, from stuff that existed in terms of two-way to try to continue solicit different stakeholder groups, whatever the topic is. So, we'll continue to build on it, but felt like this goal, there was some pretty good progress that was made. And I would say, looking at all of those, I would say that the, the family forum was really a success. And it came out of that two-way communication piece, um, at the end of January and, um, and continues to be for, for, um, parents. So, that was goal six. Goal seven was Jackie's, which had to do with her ACP, but I will take on that because worked a little bit with that, especially in quarter four. So, um, our academic career plans are something that will be part of our roadmap as we look at blending in those learner outcomes. Um, what I would say, um, that was a success, uh, you know, we did, our counselors were attending the college and career ready network at, um, CISA. So, part of that was to allow them to hear what other districts are doing because we are, as I've shared with you, behind in that journey a little bit. So, it was good for them to network with neighboring school districts about where are you? I know our middle school counselor, um, from going to those has reached out and actually did some site visits with some other middle school counselors, which was great because we hadn't previously been doing that. So, that gave them at least some, some networking that happened. Uh, Jackie did just work in some of the work last week where T- Lynn mentioned that teachers are here working. She's been working with them in developing some learner outcomes for our ACP that will be across the board, um, specifically six, twelve, but we also wanna bring some to K-five. And I think as most people are aware, in that last week of school specifically, we did pilot some activities for students in grades nine, ten and eleven. Our ninth graders, um, Lynn sort of, sort of led that piece of it. They did a reflection on themselves as a learner at the end of their freshman year. They did a little, um, some orientation to our, uh, eighth graders as they were leaving, what to expect. They did some skits. They answered their questions about what it's like to be a freshman, what you think it is and what it really is. So, that was sort of fun and cute. Um, but they really reflected on where they are as a learner. So, that's part of our whole process about, like, where did I grow, where did I come into high school and where am I at the end of my freshman year?
Can I just add that they, they offered a lot of, they had these roundtable discussions and panel discussions that were facilitated by a neutral teacher and then the freshman academy teachers just kind of like bounced around to these groups. And a lot of feedback on freshman academy and a lot of feedback on, you know, what they thought of the year and just a lot of good information came out of that. And all the students were just hyper-engaged and very honest and forthright and, and kind of extending each other's responses. So, that was really a good, a good ending for their year.
Yeah. I think, again, all of these events, nobody knew quite, cause we were piloting a lot of stuff and we didn't know. We had this day and a half, you know, seniors aren't with us. How do we make meaningful learning yet, you know? And, and so, I think that that was a success. Um, Jackie sort of, um, had the tenth grade experience in which students got on buses and they all visited a business. They visited a, um, post-secondary institution. So, it could be M A T C or UW Milwaukee, UW or Whitewater, um, Carroll College. It, in, and then the third place was a volunteering organization. So, it could have been Hunger Task Force or whatever. So, every bus went to three different places. We did not, partly because of logistics, have kids say, well, I wanna be an engineer, therefore, I wanna go to MSOE and this and this. We said, you're probably gonna go to MSOE anyway with your parents when you tour it. So, go to someplace that you might not and hear what that is. So, um, we tried to keep it broad. These were tenth graders. So, um, we heard lots of positive feedback from the volunteering places. In fact, it probably led us into a conversation for next year about doing a day of service. We've talked about that community service piece. They really had to drag the kids away from Hunger Task Force. They really, they wanted to get out in the fields and do stuff because they did more of the, um, and there were buses of people coming to work that day. So, I think it really, the feedback from the survey from students, um, was very positive. Some of them felt, you know, at first that, well, like, I'm not gonna go into manufacturing or I'm not going into, um, the health field and I went to C G E Healthcare. But I think it was just opening their eyes because we all know that as tenth graders, they might think they know what it is that they wanna do, but it's always like, oh, I remember and I visited, you know, whatever it is. So, went to the Brewers' front office. So, there was, it was a good mix of things. So, Jackie really worked and organized a lot of that. And then, um, as I shared before, for our juniors, we did the, um, payday event in which was the personal finance piece of it. Um, I've had, um, all of the business and volunteer people that have taken the survey for feedback, a hundred percent of them said that, that they would gladly return and volunteer for the event again next year. So, you know, a couple of suggestions interesting, um, you know, is, is, as they talk about this and this, and they're like, yeah, but they're seventeen-year-olds, so I don't know if that would've made a difference. So, there was a couple of people that commented, you know, how they were, you know, and a couple of things like insurance, really wanted to do some one-on-one and they're like, yeah, but they're seventeen. I don't know how much they would listen to my hour spiel about insurance and they're like, probably not. So, um, so overall, a great response there. We can enhance it next year. Um, the chamber, uh, both chambers actually were represented. They're Greenfield and Hills Corner. So, that, um, also was a great event. And I think now that we have our own video, we can show, it's a lot easier to say, this is what it is, this is what it looks like. Um, and can do a little bit, we can get that started much sooner, let them know about the orientation and all of those pieces. Um, and we are adding, as you know, a second business teacher next year because our personal finance has grown. And we continue to look at what that looks like K-12. So, we'll look at how do we expand it or how do we link that into our curriculum and make that a sort of an exit piece of that. So, those were the things related to goal seven, related, related to academic and career planning. It was great to be able to pilot those and now as we look at those learning activities, how do we make those? How do those fit into those continuum of things that all students will get annually? And one of those things, hey, as a freshman, I do this and as a sophomore, I do this and as a junior, I do this. How we build upon the depth of those skills. So, that was, it was a good experience. So.
Lisa, one of the things I noticed when this payday was originally brought out, I went and I looked at some, like YouTube videos from other schools who are running a similar program, I think under a different name. And one of the things that I noticed is that they were doing them, I'd seen more at the middle school level. And so, I wonder if there's opportunities, I'm just wondering if for the sequence of it. And the comments were things like, oh, now I'm taking my education a little bit more seriously as I'm entering into high school because I know how much impact this is gonna have down the road for me. So, one of my things that I'm wondering is like, is eleventh grade getting far along for the kids, you know, for it to have an impact on them in terms of their academic planning and career choices? So, just, just a thought.
So, one thing, so we do, we've talked about, as you know, the, the, some of our fifth graders do BizTown and then in eighth grade, they have another experience. Um, and we have not had our eighth graders do that. So, the year of the junior is really about the personal finance piece of it because our eighth graders would not be able to comprehend the level of, uh, long-term insurance and disability insurance and the level of conversations that they were having. So, in terms of, can, can there be a, 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 a less of an intense experience where they're looking at the career piece of it? And absolutely, and I think that's what we're trying to say is, we did that BizTown in fifth grade and then kids don't get anything till eleventh grade. How do we link it back? So, that would be.
BizTown is only at H C E, correct?
Currently, right. And this year, I don't think they wrote the grant for it cause their, um, teachers had been writing the grant at Kohl's. And so, we had, again, and that's where, Karen, that was one of those things that we had talked about where some of our elementary, our kids were getting different experiences. Like, our fifth graders at H C E were getting it, but our fifth graders at Edgerton weren't. Or one was getting the kindness retreat and the other, like, we're talking about that. If we think it's part of all of these, then every fifth grader should get it or every eighth grader. And it's easier once they get to sixth grade because they're all in the same building. So.
That's part of the ongoing discussion right now too because the, um, H C E has been using BizTown as their social studies course. So, that's what social studies has been for them and social studies has been something completely different at Edgerton. So, as we continue to kind of say, it's a K-five curriculum and we wanna offer similar experiences, we have to make those decisions too.
But, no, it's a good point. I think there needs to be something before they get there. It was pretty intense. I mean.
Yeah, I'd say the maturity level would, for what was being offered, the businesses, you, the maturity level was just about right for seventh grade. You'd have to water it down or do a different aspect for seventh or eighth grade. Not saying you can't, I'm just saying that format was, um, yeah.
Yeah, there's some.
I'd probably have been busy, busier, but, uh, you know, the insurance or some of the other financial aspects.
Credit counseling was pretty busy with like, why did you get yourself in this situation? If you can't have a second job, well, you have three kids at home. You can't have a second job cause try, I mean, they really got in some in-depth conversations, which were great, but they're like, but, yeah.
And, and we've toured that, uh, the J, Junior Achievement, um, eighth grade facility, talked with the instructors there and the people that run it there. So, as you were saying, building that together, we've seen it already. We know what's there, what's offered. So, if we go in that direction, we can tailor it. So, I think by the time they get to eleventh grade, you're reinforcing that, but maybe not focusing on stuff that was already covered in the eighth grade version.
It's more of a simulated in a, in a controlled environment there where this was pretty real with real people who that was their occupation in our own community. But no, I think it's, we do wanna go and build in that gap, absolutely. So, that's part of that. Goal eight, um, really has to do with partnerships or, and, uh, and this had to do with our prospectus basically, our branding, our tagline. And so, um, we started out very strong with introducing that. And then, sort of, as we talked about it, like, we're, we're, what does it mean? How do we get common language? And that's where, um, on April eighth and then the twenty-second, when Joe came and introduced himself to the board, like, how do we move it? How do we, what we call operationalize the vision? So, right now, it's a phrase, but what does it really mean to be all in? And so, I've had some fabulous conversations with him as I'm sitting in the hot seat and being asked, well, what does that mean? Because like, I, I'm being forced to sort of answer that. So, every person knows what that means. And pretty excited about the vision that's coming out of that and what that means for our, um, students in district. And so, we'll be, we'll be taking a look at that. So, the continuous improvement is really the next piece in that journey cause you can have a vision and a mission and who we are, but you've gotta like, say, how do we put that into action and what does that look like? So, I think it's gonna bring together the question that's been in the district at least since I've kind of like, what really is personalizing learning? It's this buzzword, but I don't think we've ever articulated and feeling really good about what that means. And, you know, a teaser is like really getting to know each student individually, like, for who they are. Not just some method of education, cause that's not what it is. In order to serve students, we have to know students. And whether that's social, emotional, whether it's the curriculum that we do academically and getting to know them. And so, excited about how that's coming together and I think it will really drive a lot of our work. It fits together with a lot of the teaching and learning stuff, as Lynn and I talked today and I talked with Jackie last Friday. It's really well with a lot of that. So, I think it's gonna be the stuff that we've got these things started. It will be the piece that it will cohesively bring together. So, um, I think, you know, you've, you've all completed the survey that, um, Joe has sent over. It's, you know, what are the opportunities for the district? Where, where, where have we not yet capitalized on? What are some things that, um, all of those, you know, very open-ended questions that we look at? So, that work and he'll be with the board at least two times in July, um, to look at what that is. But it's taking that next step as we spent time at the retreat last summer on our values. Like, what do those mean? Where do we see them? What, how do we actually take it to the next level instead of just making some posters on the wall with them? So, um, I think that it was a great start this year, but the next question is, it's not just gonna become some binder or document that we put on a shelf and said, we did that way back in 2019. Remember that great campaign? We all have a T-shirt. So, we need to move it to the next level, which I think, um, we've laid some groundwork for. So. So, that was sort of our goals, our nine goals we had. We reported in forty days, forty-five day cycles. Um, what we've talked about, uh, with Joe next year, they might be very similar. In short, if you're familiar with PDSA cycles, plan, do, study, act. Um, short cycles like to talk about, like, in terms of, it was much easier for us to manage this year by having forty-five day cycles and coming back rather than, okay, it's time to report. Well, I don't have anything. It just let us look, um, I think it helped us. So, we're excited about even having that chunked out a little bit more and some metrics to follow. So, and as, you know, he's done that journey with other districts who are, get nationally visits based on their ability to, to do that. I think that, um, we're, we're ready for that. We've been laying the groundwork for the last couple of years. So. That's that. And they're all out for anybody, public community. They're all from our prospectus on our website. They are the links of every goal and our composite. I'll probably do an overall summary of all nine goals to just talk about that. But you can see the, all of those documents are available out there right now. So.
Thank you. Okay. Onto seven B, referendum construction update. Are we going to respect the update? What does that mean, respect update?
You were using that word a lot.
Oh, respect the update. Yeah. So, I, I was out last week. All I've seen so far are the high school bathrooms and they are fantastic.
I just took Mike on a tour.
I know Lisa has a lot more to add about what she's seen and the magnificence that is happening across the district right now.
So, at the last couple of weeks, we've been talking about when do we do community open houses because of the timing. Cause we, parents and students will be in the buildings at the last week of August. And so, if we wait till September to do something, it's sort of anticlimactic a little bit. So, we're trying to decide and working with the principals, like, do, how do we time that? But we also can't do it too early while the buildings aren't ready and the furniture hasn't arrived or whatever. So, we looked at a couple tentative dates. We're thinking that last week in August because parents and, and students will already be in the buildings when they do their open houses and come in for picture night. So, we're, we're talk, we're talking about that. And because, you know, we have Hills Corners Elementary and we have the middle school and we have the high school, we're probably not doing a, an official open house with the bathrooms at Edgerton or the fire system. I don't know, but Chris really didn't think that that was sort of a, a thing to look at. But, um, you know, do we hold them on three separate nights or do people just have to drive from one to the other? Like, there's just some list of logistics like that. But, so we talked about that. Last week, you know, some things that are happening in terms of timing and all of that, but we are pretty much on schedule. Um, a little bit, we're about a week off in one of the buildings, but there was enough of a buffer that we're really not throwing anything off. Like, it wasn't, I, I won't tell you when it was, when we're supposed to be scheduled, but we're, we're still in plenty of time for the August deadlines. We, they've buffered it quite well.
August what deadline?
Like the kids back.
Yeah, the August deadline, but the, actually, the construction deadline is much before that. So, the, the fact that we're a week off, we're still plenty of weeks in advance. So, today did a quick, um, cause I had to go pick, I had to look at some outside things and pick some flooring out at the middle school. So, went over to the middle school and like, uh, like, it totally changes the entire look of, like, you wouldn't, like, it is, it's crazy. So, um, some more paint, you know, it's got that weird gold in there, so we're gonna go in some of the hallways. But just that whole science piece of it and the open glass and the, where kids can be. So, the math rooms in the STEM area, so there's like four math rooms in the corner, but that's all opened up and there's just a pillar. And then, there's this large working area where math students can go out on each of the corners. But then you come into the whole science STEM columns and the rooms are huge and enormous. There was so much wasted space. If you ever were in the middle school science rooms where there was like this corridor behind there that didn't really have good footing and these weird little nooks and crannies that nobody ever saw. So, the, the com, everything has got, you know, glass where you can supervise students extremely well in this lab. So, like, seriously, I could've just stood there, like, both Todd and I just stood there like, this is unbelievable. Like, this, people, if they don't say wow when they stand here, like, it was, it just, it changes the whole. You know, the middle school's got like the square feeling and then this figure eight feeling on the second level. This just totally like opens it up. Like, it, it, it is. You've got, you've gotta be there to experience. It was very cool. So, um, saw that, then went to the high school today. All the, all of the stuff is in there. So, looked at the school store and when you're looking down the hallway, what it looks like. Was trying to look at some of the wraps that we had and the agreements from that. But was in the, um, where the computers are gonna be for some of our computerated design classes and the countertop is in there and where the dual monitors and that. But you can stand there and talk about natural lighting, what we know, what that does for kids. Cause so many of our buildings are just concrete wall in which they don't have block lighting. So, I'll be standing there and you can see Falcon Field. All these windows are now open. There's windows. So, you can literally, it feels like you're outside. And then you can look outside and you can see in the hallway and then the commons area and see outside in the other way. So, the natural lighting, I mean, you see if you have this whole feeling in there. But, um, looking at those. But, um, looking at those spaces and where all of the other pieces are, we're pretty, um, we're pretty great. Like, you're actually seeing where the learning is. And so, um, the cloud ceilings are there and the uplighting is in there and all of that. So, I mean, for student learning and that, like, feeling like I'm in this place where I want to learn and, and do and whatever was, was exciting. So, haven't been inside some of the classrooms with, um, Hales Corners Elementary. So, I'm going to do that tomorrow with the kindergarten classrooms. The science classrooms have all the cabinetry in and all the, you know, the paint is done there. So, the next thing after they get the electrical panel out of the middle part of it is, like, really is flooring. So, you know, we're, we're, so, it's exciting. It is, it's, it's just seeing the learning spaces. If you want to get excited about learning. The roof is on the high school. I didn't get quite as excited about that, like, when the cranes were here the last couple of weeks, but, um, it happened. But the outside, if you drive by the back of the building, all of the, um, new silver, the chrome panels are there and the, the beams are painted black. The garage doors are in and so, it just looks super sharp, none of that rusty, like, all of that stuff that was there. So, um, yeah, it just looks, like, you just get this, like, okay, I could, kids could, like, just what some of those pieces could do to like how a kid would, like, it just, just opens it up so much more. So, exciting in all of those pieces.
Will we get a tour in August?
You should get a pre, like, is it, what is it called when people get like a, like a, like?
Doorbuster?
No, like, people get like, dignitary people get to have the little, the pre, like, whatever it is. So, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Preview, whatever.
Yeah, a little preview before the public can actually see it, right?
A soft opening?
Soft opening, like the employee discount piece of it, yeah. So, no, yes. So, um, yeah, it is, I think, it just, and I, and the kids, like, I was, I, I took the la, one of the last middle school tours, I just happened to be over there with a group of kids and I'm like, it was, I think, Jane Borcher. I'm like, I'm just going to take along with your kids. And they're like, ooh, like, they were just, it's, it's fun watching the kids get exciting about, like, these are going to be our science classrooms and just like that. So, I think, talked to the science teachers last week, Lynn, when was that Wednesday? Just about the spaces and how they can use them and how they're planning for it. And they wanted to name some of the spaces because once you give it a name, like, it's going to stick with it for the next 25 years. So, that's been fun. So, I think the excitement is really, like, now that you see it and now all the plastic is down and asbestos is removed and they're actually, now it's all, no more destruction. Now, it's all building up and paint is happening and stuff like that. So, it's exciting.
Are you excited?
I am, but, so we have to get, so there's a 45-day wait period for the elementary science. We're a little bit nervous because the village needs this to get into their planning commission. So, we're hoping that that will be done in time, but, yeah, so.
Great, thank you. Uh, on to SWSA report.
We, neither of us went, we had a payday, so.
Great.
Hopefully, we'll be able to attend next meeting.
Yeah, and I signed up for the follow-up. I don't know if you did.
I did.
I am forwarding you stuff from Terry Phillips from SWSA because as legislation, and I, I know W A S B mimics some of that stuff that's getting sent out. There were some things that were passed, not passed, related to education bill. So, just, we'll pay attention to that, but, yeah.
Any P T O or liaison reports?
Schools open, baby. No meeting. Enjoying it.
We didn't meet last, um, month, the Parker Rec Board. Our meeting is actually this Thursday. But, um, has, has the district been contacted about the school board members riding in the parade this year?
No, I was going to ask Kathy about that. Nobody's contacted us.
Nobody, really? Okay, that's interesting.
We have new magnets though. We should follow, maybe we should follow with both Hales Corners and Greenfield about that and ask if people are available to do that.
Because I know we were contacted as Parker Rec Board members, but I'm not even going to be here for the, for the parade this year and for the.
Because last year, we were in both parades and so typically they send stuff out for the same entries. We had nothing because the board was in both parades last year. We should follow up and see if people are.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of interesting. But, you know, we've had Ethan's run and that was really, uh, well-attended, I understand. And, um, the Vietnam Wall and that was a really cool thing and that was really well-attended. So, the Fourth of July and the celebrations coming up for that.
And has the farmer's market started?
Farmer's market has started. And the, um, movies and the, and the concerts at Conco Park has started. I don't have a schedule. I'll probably get all that stuff on Thursday, so I can hand that out, um, at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Anything to report from the middle school?
Middle school elected its new officers and now we're just looking forward to next year.
Okay, okay, perfect. All right, thank you. On to referendum monthly financials.
Here they are.
Fantastic, anybody have any questions?
Are we, where are we at?
Yeah, yeah, so our contingency is in good shape still. And so, we're pleased with that at this point, although every week, there's another little thing that drops it down. But, uh, C G Schmidt does not seem concerned yet, so I'm good with that. I think internally, our contingency on those five, four projects are doing well. We came in under budget for flooding. We're coming under budget for, um, one other thing, I gotta catch up on that. But our contingency for that is doing well. We are accruing interest at a pretty good pace right now and that's not in our calculations at all as far as dipping into that interest side of things. And so, we're probably well over a hundred thousand dollars right now that we're accruing as we slowly pace this project out. And so, I'm really hoping that as we look at a 10-year facility plan, that there are some dollars there that we can address some alternate, some alternative needs or things that we couldn't cover during the process. So, right now, um, I'm liking how things, although now the C G Schmidt bill is like, they're for real. When you open that up, you're like, that's.
So, we are, by the verbiage of the referendum, we are allowed to do other things?
We are, as long as they fit within the verbiage of the passage of the referendum question. And that's where, that's why you have legal help you write that, those questions up to be specific, yet when there's contingency, what could also fit in? I mean, spoiler alert, you can always do roofing and that is specifically called out in the, in the question.
So, who's making that decision? Is the board going to make the decision whether to move forward or to give back?
Yes, because A, projects that would come out of this contingency would be projects that would require board approval. I mean, we're not doing like, you can't do like 10, 15, or $20,000 world projects. These are projects that would have to fit into a referendum question, would have to come to the board, the project itself. So, obviously, before that, it would probably require financing facilities to take a look at, here's where we ended up, now what?
Great, thank you.
But that probably won't be till late fall when all the bills are paid?
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I was just trying to get a timeline on when we know that, like, we're good and we've done punch lists at every building.
I would imagine it is, is in coordination with the 10-year facility plan. That those two pieces are going to be working pretty closely together. And then whether or not, you're right, whether they get invested back into the district or brought back out to the community, those are discussions we have to.
Great, okay. Thank you. Uh, on to eight items for future consideration. Okay, on to nine announcements. Any announcements?
How about our boy Tyler Hero?
Yeah, congratulations. That's fantastic.